Executive session. Regular, okay, sorry, I'm sorry, presentation of architects, I apologize. I have the wrong thing.
Yes, I'd like to ask DMR, please come forward and you can give your, start your presentation.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to come and present our credentials again. How can you guys hear me? Okay?
No.
How's, is it better? I need to turn. Okay. Now I can hear myself too. Good evening and thank you for giving us the opportunity to present DMR's credential. My name is Pradeep Kapoor and his my partner Kurt Vorahilik will be presenting our credential based on what you had requested us to present. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kurt, he's gonna present our achievements and then I'll come back and I'll go through the process.
Great, thank you very much for having us back this evening. We're excited to be able to present additional information for you about DMR. There we go. So for over thirty-three years, DMR has delivered hundreds of school facilities to local districts. Our commitment is to create educational environments that enhance the ability for students to learn and grow. Today, we want to focus on these four bullets up here. One, creating student-focused environments. Two, incorporating latest technologies into design. Third, opportunities for vocational education. And then, a little bit about our process on how DMR delivers projects. So, the first is student-focused spaces. A large part of successful school environment is the interestful spaces that support the classroom work and curriculum. We believe that by incorporating these spaces, it helps the students' learning and collaboration process to grow. These spaces offer opportunity for students to casually interact and socialize in a less-stressful atmosphere. This also opens the opportunity for peer-to-peer interactions, which helps to foster another level of respect and growth between students. One example of recently, project that we're working on completing is, on the right side there is that Collaboration Hub, which is in Edison. So on that particular project, we're, we developed a new academic building and because, due to the configuration of the, this new wing, as it related to the rest of the building, we created this expanded lobby slash corridor space. And within that space, we created this collaborative kind of step seating area. So, the idea was because of the proximity of this building, it, we wanted to create a space that was going to enhance the learning environment and kind of create some excitement for, you know, what's happening in this new classroom wing, as opposed to just be kind of a standalone, non, non-interactive space and building. So, so that, and then we have a couple other examples here, as you see, we've, Learning Commons, where we're creating these dynamic, you know, wall of, of space that can be used as a collaboration kind of learning zone and, and then a flex space, this collaboration within the hallway, which gives opportunity for students to stop and hang out and, again, collaborate peer-to-peer. Secondly, I want to talk a little about steam spaces. So, districts have been putting strong emphasis on providing more robust curriculum here. DMR works with the goals of district to implement these specialized spaces that offer the ability for students to grow intellectually and get hands-on experience learning. An example that we, that we have recently completed is in the middle here, that biomedical lab. And I think, as I mentioned last time, this is kind of really new technology to the student classroom environment. So, this specialized table allows for 3D exploration of the human body and this allows the technology and the learning to come to life for the students and really get a better understanding of, of particularly, the human body and anatomy and the whole bone structure and organs and whatnot. So, that table is this 3D interactive element and kind of incorporated, we've incorporated that into a few actual districts' classroom spaces. So, really gives a, an opportunity for technology to really enhance the learning process. And, and then, a little bit about vocational spaces. So, recently, we've seen, you know, the move towards the introduction of vocational spaces with a focus on career pathways and career and technical education, which is CTEs, those programs, incorporating programs such as engineering, robotics, skilled trades. These, all these are, you know, reemerging educational programs that are, that are coming back into school curriculums. So, we've implemented many of these over the years, these specialized vocational spaces. And, on the left here is a wood shop, the Wood Shop and Engineering at I-Tech High School in Secaucus. And that had a very extensive program of wood shop, metal lab, engineering, and other, other vocational spaces. And then, another one I want to point out is in the middle there, that's the, the landscape design facility, and that's in Paramus, that's a Bergen Techni, Bergen County Technical School. So, that was one where actually the facility was designed to be able to get hands-on experience with doing maintenance on, on landscape equipment, learning how to do, draw with CAD, learning how to do landscape design, learning about horticulture and the right plants to plant. So, that, we had completed that project, which incorporates those, again, kind of vocational program needs that are, that are becoming more and more popular today with the advent of, you know, not every student is necessarily on the, on the path to going to college and with skilled trades being a very profitable and in-demand thing recently. I think that's why it's, we're seeing more and more of that happening in the educational realm, so. And then, Pradeep is gonna come up and talk a little bit about DMR's process in delivering projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. So, as we work on a lot of public projects, and a lot of them are schools, so we look at like, you know, what do we call project a success? A successful project is when you can realize your client's dream, what they want to do, kind of a project they want to complete. If the project is on budget, that's what you set out to be, and the project is on schedule, and also, when the construction goes around, it has least problems. So those are the four things which we consider our project to be successful and that's how we have broken down our design and the project delivery process in these four parameters. So, what's our approach to project management? So, we'll meet with you, we'll understand your vision, and we'll put that on paper. And, so you have a clear understanding of what you are getting and what we are giving you. And this could be doing a charrette sessions, design charrette sessions, seeing your existing spaces, taking you to different facilities we have designed, or bringing in the new trends which you can look at to understand how the spaces can be designed and what is the future schools look like. You will also have a dedicated project manager who's gonna be working with you from start to finish, which is from the early programming phases to all the way to the construction. There are people who will come in between, like, you know, Kurt works on the design and there'll be production people, there'll be construction people, but you will have a continuity of one person who's gonna be with you throughout, who understands your design process and can bring that continuity. So that's on the project management side. The next thing is, is critical for any public project is the budget. How do we stay within the budget and deliver you what you want to do? So, I think I had mentioned it last time also, but we have in-house cost estimators who used to work in a construction industry, they've been with us for a long time now. And they prepare budgets on each milestone. So when we are starting the programming, we'll do a budget, we'll tell you, okay, this is what you're looking to build, this is what it could cost. And then, as we are designing, most of clients, they learn about the project as they're designing, their thoughts, they have different ideas. So we bring that attention to the budget. They say, okay, you want to do this, this can change the design, it will cost this much. So you have that informed decision that what your, informed information, that what your changes can do to the budget. And then, we also then offer you cost-effective solutions and ideas that how we can design things differently, whether it's with shared spaces or whether it's with different type of collaborative designs we have seen or we have designed in other places, to do things effectively. Approach to the schedule. Now, what we have seen in our, in my twenty-five-year career here is, the school construction thrives a lot on, depends, relies a lot on the project schedule. What you can do during summer, what you can do during the small Christmas or winter break. And the school has to open at a certain time. So, we will work with you to build those schedules that, okay, what type of project you want to do. Is it a roofing project, is it a small addition, is it a roof replacement project, or, and then we'll be able to tell you, okay, we understand your timeline, what's important, and when this construction has to take place. And we will design the project, go out to bid, get the bids back, because a lot of schools want to do a lot of improvement project during summer. Now, right now, we're designing so many projects which we are out for bid, which we get bids by end of this month, and they will be lined up to go to construction from June onwards, so they can be open in time for, after the school opens in September. So, those kind of things become very important for the project schedule. Then, we also identify the long lead items. So when we are designing the project, from our experience, we know what kind of material, whether it's rooftop units or flooring or light fixtures or elevator, will be long lead items so that we can work with the contractor, get those shop drawings approved in time, and so they can order it and project can stay on schedule. We work with the contractor to help them develop their schedule, so the project can be done on time. I mean, I just wanna, I was talking to Charlie before the meeting today, we completed Secaucus High Tech High School, three hundred and fifty thousand square feet building, which was massive project, hundred and fifty million dollar project, and which was delivered on time and on budget. So, that's what was our commitment was to the project. So, last item on this is quality control and quality assurance. So, we have in-house quality control people, they meet with the design, they are sort of like, you know, second set of eyes or third set of eyes, they look at the project from a constructibility point of view, from, as a contractor would look at, so they're not part of the design team, but they are, I call them like a red team, so they are analyzing the project and seeing what could be the, either scheduling issue or constructibility issue or coordination issue, so that we can identify these problems during the design so that we have less issues during the construction and project can run more smoothly. And that helps us stay on budget and stay on, on the schedule. So, in closing, again, okay, I would like to say like, you know, we have been the pioneer in education design since last thirty-three-plus years. We've been designing a lot of, I think we have designed over one thousand-plus schools, over billion-dollar construction. We focus on providing you what your vision is and also bring in our ideas and design spaces which are really fun and exciting for students to come to school with. Our projects stay on budget, we maintain the schedule and provide you that one-stop-shop of your design solutions. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Is there a discussion from any of the board members? Does anybody have any questions for DMR? Jared?
You, you did I-Tech here in the co-op.
Correct.
And I know that's a LEED school.
That's correct.
And there was a lot of efforts put into making sure that it's extremely, sorry, thank you very much. Usually I don't need a microphone pretty loud. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
Is, is there a plan for this to be also something that'll be environmentally conscious, be energy efficient, that it's gonna be something that we would look at with, or a plan being offered, doesn't say we have to follow through that, but one of your plans have that?
Sure. I'm glad you asked that question because I, it's very close to my heart. DMR was the architect for the first LEED-certified school in New Jersey, and I believe we have stayed leader in, in LEED-designed buildings. So one thing which we did, and this is before even I-Tech High School was in design, we started incorporating LEED and sustainable design principle in our design. So, whether it's energy efficiency or bringing in recycled products and, or water efficiency or site categories, we designed the projects keeping those things in mind. So if the client ever feels like, you know, they want to go for certification, which a lot of schools do, that we don't have to redesign it for you. So our cost to redesign for LEED is negligible, because we have already included those principles. So, that is something we actually do regardless, whether you will say that you want to design, design a LEED-certified school, or you want to design a regular school, you will get that with us.
Perfect, thank you.
If you want to go above and beyond, then we can always talk about solar panels.
As long as it's an option, I think that trustees should know that there's an option of doing, some, moving something LEED, you know, efficient.
Correct.
You mentioned in one of the issues, security, and again, I'll bring up I-Tech, it is an extremely secure entrance.
That is correct.
You know, and having been educated thirty-nine years, this is a growing concern that you have a secure building for, the first rule of all of us is to make sure our kids are sa, and staff are safe every day. So, part of what you presented here was secure entrances.
Correct.
And that's a focus on your, on your architectural designs.
That is correct. So, as you mentioned, since, you know, Sandy who can incident, a lot of schools have become more aware of security. We have been designing the secured vestibule in many, many school districts we are working on, in Carteret, in Hackensack, in Edison, we are doing a lot of projects in Tana Fly that, where we are secure, creating the secure vestibule so that nobody can just walk into the school. What we have done, which is a little bit above and beyond, we have used this opportunity to design, give a presence and entrance to the school. So as you will see, a lot of the security vestibule project we have done, we have also taken that opportunity since you are doing the construction, make the enters look more exciting, make the enters looks more new. So we have done that in many, many schools.
As we're updating our long-range facility plan, we're looking at growth in the district and different needs and uses. Is, the design you're coming up will have flexible use as a construct of that, where we'll be able to say that this room could be used for different events, for either teaching or for a meeting place? Is that something you also do, where you develop flexible use space?
So, the way we have been doing in, which is similar to what you are asking for, but we will create a master plan with you. So, long-range facility plan purpose is to submit to DOE that you are in compliance with what your needs are. But what we have been doing in other school districts, we are coming up with a master plan, which is even above and beyond long-range facility plan, so that you can see how you can use the space based on your curriculum, based on your growth, based on what you see. So, we will work on that plan with you on different schools.
And one final question. As you're doing, you mentioned vocational programs, I know the state had been offering funds for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade vocational programs to encourage districts to start teaching the students vocational programs in sixth, seventh, eighth grades. Are you familiar with any of that kind of stuff? Should the district be reaching out to you, say, what kind of programs, what kind of funding might be available? So we incorporate that into our program?
So, in these cases, actually, school came to us. School came to us and said, okay, we want to introduce this program, and we prepared the application, and we submitted to DOE, and DOE approved it, and the grants which were available, we worked with them. But like I was saying earlier, we can bring you ideas that what we are doing in other schools, because each school, I would say, demographic is different, the needs are different, but we will work with you to come up with, you know, that plan.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other trustees have questions? No? Do you have any questions for us?
Just wanted to know when you will make the decisions, so we look forward to working with you.
This evening.
Oh, that's great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice holiday.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Good evening, everyone. We got the placemats too. Yeah, if you don't mind, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. I think that's it. That's the best view we'll get. Yeah, they're full presentation mode.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. There you go.
Okay, and now I'd like to introduce Land Associates to do the next presentation.
All right, well, thank you for having us back. We'll introduce ourselves.
Thank you for coming back out.
Our pleasure, we're really happy to be here, grateful for this opportunity, and we'll jump right in, I believe we have fifteen minutes, right, to present? Very good. So, we'll kick off with reintroductions. I'm Matt Wolfe, I'm Assistant Vice President, help run our architecture team, I have over twenty years' experience and I'm a licensed architect, based out of our headquarters in Midland Park, and have a long history of doing a lot of board of ed work and a very diverse portfolio of work. I'd be your project exec, engaged in all aspects of projects, serving your district.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Matt Fink, Land Associates, licensed architect, certified interior designer. I've been with my firm my entire career, actually. And I look forward to being project manager, if we work with the district. I'd be your day-to-day contact and assisting all the projects and moving forward.
I won't make the same Matt joke that I did last time, so. Tom Wighard, I've been at Land Associates for twenty-three years, my whole career, I'm a professional engineer and a registered architect. I head up all of our MEP department and projects, I'll be on the engineering side for any project that requires HVAC, electrical plumbing. K through twelve is about sixty percent of what we do any given year, so it's right in our wheelhouse for the projects that you have coming down the road. Looking forward to learn more about your district and how we can help you.
So, Land Associates, we've been around approximately sixty years. You know, we are architects and engineers, a lot of firms say they're one-stop-shopping, but they really sub out a lot of their work. We actually have mechanical, electrical, plumbing, civil, surveying, land use, construction administration, architecture, and interior design, all under one roof. You would be dealing with, you know, myself or Matt as your main point of contacts for all those types of projects, though. Whether it's a civil engineering project, engineering project, you know, we, it would all funnel through us. We've got a hundred and thirty people, five offices, so we have a really good, deep bench of professionals, and we are really well-positioned, you know, to serve your district. Here's a bit of an organizational chart. Like I mentioned, I'd be a project executive, engaged in all aspects of project planning, budgeting, high-level teaming, and just making sure that we're servicing you well as a district. On the left side, you, you see Matt Fink, who just introduced himself as a day-to-day project manager. You see on the top right, Tom. And then we also have on the bottom left, environmental, land use and civil, and bottom right is civil. So, we have a team, you know, curated specifically to serve you guys regardless of your needs.
So at Land Associates, we have three main offices, one in Midland Park, one in Goshen, New York, one in Voorhees. From our Midland Park office, our corporate headquarters, we do a large majority of our work in northern New Jersey. Up on the screen, you see our partial client listing of some of our educational clients, and a lot of these we've been with for multiple decades. We've been passionate about this marketplace and we've had some strong bonds with a lot of our districts, and as you'll see, we've had a lot, you know, encompassing this general area, again, for a large period of time. This is where we get to the Secaucus School District. Up on the screen, you'll see a few of your various buildings, but this is a starting point. We really look forward to learning more about you, learning about your facilities, learning more about your staff, and creating one team. By one team, I mean our team and your team working together towards a common goal. So while there's a lot to learn, there's a lot we can do together to make a very successful learning atmosphere for all the students in the entire district.
Next, we're gonna talk a little bit about our design process. You know, a lot of folks that may not work with architects and engineers regularly think that we just get hired, we do our magic for a few months, and then we come back and give you a finished product. And then, and that's not the way we work. Here's a little bit of a snapshot of what the process is. You know, our design philosophy is based and grounded in collaboration. You know, we, we really want to, like Matt was saying, know your needs, know what your objectives and drivers are, you know, for all types of projects. And then we typically start a project off with a kickoff meeting, occasionally a visioning session, maybe with teachers, could be with students, faculty, administration. And on the top left, you'll see some sketches, inspirational images, that's how we like to kick off, you know, the visioning for many of our projects. From there, once the scope and the general vision is agreed upon, we go to the next item, which is plans and elevations. Sometimes they're two-dimensional drawings, many times they're three-dimensional drawings. You'll see later in our presentation how much of what we do is now in 3D. Drawings are not just flat, you know, anymore. Most of it's three-dimensional, whether it's the architecture, the MEP, the structural. Majority of our work is done in a program called Revit, where it's all three-dimensional drawing. You'll see the third bubble up there is photorealistic renderings. Our team is equipped to develop photorealistic renderings all throughout the process, you know, from concept through, you know, construction documents, we can update and produce renderings that are really believable. And you'll see in a later slide how many of our renderings actually mimic what the finished product, product is really, really well. And then the last bubble on the right is virtual reality. Normally, when we have a little more time, we actually show you an example. Normally, when we have a little more time, we actually show you an example of what a virtual reality experience would be. And we show a little animation. Tonight, we actually cut that out just to save a little time, but the technology is there. You could put on VR goggles, you could take an iPad and, and kind of look around and see what the environment looks like. So the technology is at our fingertips, and we're equipped to guide you through the design process in a very integrated, collaborative, and virtual manner. Making your vision a reality, like I mentioned, on the left side are renderings, and the right side, in the middle of the page, are finished photos, actual finished photography of actual projects. So you'll see great resemblance. And, and actually, it's difficult to decipher, you know, the rendering from the photograph in many of these instances. So the virtual tools we have at our fingertips are a really good design aid, and it helps, you know, students and faculty and administration to visualize what they're going to get.
So Matt touched on this a little bit earlier. A lot of what we've been doing has been fully modeled in the computer using Revit, building modeling software. So what you see on the picture, on the page here is a three-story building, two stories, and a basement, about a hundred-year-old building that we had to stuff with all new technology, new HVAC, plumbing, electrical. Everything was fully modeled from the building components down to, you know, down to the receptacle level. So everything was fully modeled, rendered, coordinated, clash detection, so we avoid all those hits that turn into change orders and RFI's in the field. We deal with them in the computer before it gets out to the field, now to the contractor. All of our projects for the last several years have all been done using Revit, fully modeled with all the different disciplines in-house. We mentioned that earlier, is everything is in-house, so all of the MEPs, the architecture, these people are right down the hall from one another, so it's not a phone call, it's not an email, it's not a weak reply. It's, it's an immediate response. They can walk down the hall, talk to somebody, collaborate immediately. And, you know, the, the school projects are always going a hundred miles an hour, there's always a deadline, so we can crank these out much quicker. With the Revit, we kind of clean up a lot of that construction questioning. QAQC is improved, the change orders are reduced, the RFI's are reduced. The exciting slide of MEP improvements. It's not glamorous, but it's been very prevalent post-COVID the last several years, is HVAC improvements. We've been doing a ton of air handlers, rooftops, ventilation, exhaust, improved filtration, classroom level to system level. Some of the photos you see here are just some air handlers, rooftop units, boiler replacements. We're replacing a lot of these, you know, ancient fifty, sixty, seventy-year-old, it looks like a locomotive in a boiler room, and replacing them with something the size of a large filing cabinet, cleaning up these boiler rooms, you know, freeing up a ton of space. But we've seen a ton of interest and a ton of improvements post-COVID, trying to improve fresh air. With the improvements to fresh air and the ventilation is the addition of air conditioning. Once you add air conditioning, we're increasing the electrical service so that we have an electrical service upgrade in a lot of these districts. So we've been working with the utilities and getting all of these planned out, and planned out with the districts, just with the demand throughout the state and throughout the region of how long these projects sometimes take. We've been trying to get things released sooner, working with the district to kind of understand that there are some issues with equipment lead times due to this huge demand in, in service upgrades. But there's been many studies, post-COVID and pre-COVID, on air conditioning and cooling and temperature control and ventilation in classrooms and improved test scores. So as boring of a topic as it sometimes is, it's a very important discipline to kind of help those buildings breathe properly, help the students learn, and avoid issues like mold and some other building-related issues like that. I'll let Matt talk about this one.
So last time we met, I stated that I came from a long line of educators. And at Land, we want to make sure that it's part of our process. As one of our, you know, key market sectors, knowing the educational trends is of the utmost importance. You'll see a few images up here of things that have been emerging, things that have emerged, and then there's a few things on the way. But it's integral to have these in the whole design process. I'll speak in a few slides about STEAM labs, but from my standpoint, actually, we've tried to move beyond STEAM labs, as it's a constantly, you know, rearranging acronym. We've tried to do personalized STEAM spaces. That way, as it does evolve, the space evolves with it. There's been numerous studies on utilizing natural light, but at the same time, we try to create these spaces that blur the boundary of a classroom, that anywhere should be a learning space within the, you know, the site limits of the property. So there's an example up on screen that while there are classrooms behind, there are more informal spaces out in the corridors, out in these gray areas. So any type of learner, any type of teaching style can be performed. Like Tom said, we've also seen a rise in, you know, ventilation, as well as learning outside the classroom, tying into biophilic design, and again, opportunities beyond. We've seen new outdoor learning classrooms that we've been providing all over the space, all over the place, as well as major spaces. You'll see a nice little QR code there. One of our recent endeavors is into wellness within education, as well as wellness within design. We've done a few, actually, wellness centers now where we have the opportunity to connect both the body and mind, improving not only the day-to-day functions of the student, but also the quality within the, the overall district, as well as what they bring home. So you'll see a few pages from now, some of these emerging wellness spaces that we've been taking part in.
Back to me with the exciting projects. So Matt and Matt are going to talk to you about all these great projects we've done. You saw some photos already, you're going to see some more, you know, these big, grandiose projects. In reality, your budget is mostly consumed with capital improvements of roof replacements, window repairs, parking lots, secure vestibules, athletic fields. And just to kind of beat a dead horse is, we've got all these, all these disciplines in-house. So we've got the engineering for the fields, the roofs, the architects are handling the roofs, we've got the civil engineers for the asphalt in the parking lots, again, the MEP for the HVAC upgrades. So all of these routine projects that kind of seem mundane, but they take up a big portion of your budget, is really what we do day in and day out with most districts. You know, the additions and the brand-new schools are great. There's not a lot of free area in New Jersey left, so there's not a lot of brand-new schools or big additions. But, you know, the renovations, the capital improvements, the roof replacements, those are the things that we're, we're doing day-to-day with every district. Now we'll talk about the fancy ones.
So the next few slides are actually real project examples. You know, we've been giving you a broad overview of our expertise, our background, our expertise and in-house expertise. Next three series of slides are actually project case stories. First one we wanted to share was Cliffside Park Board of Ed. We've been working in that district for a number of years and doing a wide variety of projects. You'll see in the top left was the high school gym that we just refinished. That was all new finishes, new maple strip flooring, new windows, new HVAC, ceilings and lighting, bleachers. It was a full gym, gymnasium upgrade. The bottom left is actually a new gymnasium entrance vestibule. So it was a two-story iconic vestibule that serves as a main entry, coming off of the main sports fields in, into the building, serving the gymnasium. So that was a very successful project in incorporating signage, branding, and a new entrance element. And then the top right is just the indication of some of the roofing, HVAC, and window projects that we've done. Next project.
So noted before, we've had the pleasure of working with Cranford for decades. In the past year, we've actually passed a seventy-five million dollar referendum with them, and the theme has been continuity, that they have eight different schools, and they want to make sure that each school receives the same, and that all spaces are treated equally. They are one of the few districts within the state that actually, that did not have full-day kindergarten. So as part of the referendum process, we are providing new kindergarten additions for the entire district. But what you'll see up on screen is also the renovation work that we're providing. Bottom left and top right, we'll be working within their middle schools to provide new culinary arts labs and new STEAM labs that we'll be calling the C3 Studios, as well as new media centers and other spaces for multiple types of learning. This will be, I think, at least a five-year process, as we start construction now on the additions and some of the other renovations. But the idea is to make sure that each school throughout the entire process receives the same upgrades and within the same timeline. Again, Florham Park is another district we've been working with for a long time now. What you see here are additional renovations to some of the more unique spaces within the district. Looking at the bottom left and the top right, this is what we call the Forge, which is their new STEAM lab. This was originally a catch-all. It was their storage space, it was their home act space, it was their wood shop, it was a little bit of everything. With low ceiling heights, it was our job to provide a larger-than-life space, but one that is truly flexible. You'll see some modern branding, you'll see some new furniture designs, and then overall flexibility throughout, as well as some heavy branding and graphics. Then on the top left, we have their new media center. Back in the day, this was actually a gym, in I think the nineteen-sixties or so. Well, we found that out once we removed all the flooring, we saw the basketball striping. But since then, we've made it a new, larger-than-life media center with multiples of owns for different forms of engagement. You'll see build bars in the back, or, you know, areas for small groups to collect. You'll see a large group zone in the middle that hosts also board meetings. And then more private spaces nestled between the bookcases on the periphery, just so we can bring multiple classes in and at a time for multiple forms of engagement.
Just two more brief slides as we wrap up here. Our core values are a big driver for our firm and our firm culture, you know, loyalty, continuous focus on innovation, integrity, company pride, and insanely responsive are some of the big, big drivers of what motivates, keeps our staff accountable, and then really helps our company culture thrive. One of the values is probably our biggest differentiator these days is insanely responsive. So many clients tell us that they, they call their architects, engineers, and they don't get a response for days, if not weeks. You know, we're hearing this more and more frequently. Our mantra is, we want to get back to you in the same day, if not within hours. So insane responsiveness is one of our drivers, one of our differentiators, and that's really a commitment that we make to every district. And then in conclusion, talking about the land advantage, you know, we're a continuously growing, full-service architecture and engineering firm. Like we mentioned earlier, a hundred and thirty people, five offices, but we really have a unique team tailored to service you guys well, just about twenty, twenty-five minutes from, from here. Second item, K through twelve is our core market. You know, we're passionate about education, passionate about creating environments to serve the next generation of leaders in our communities. And third, our clients are long-term partners. Our goal is to become your trusted advisor, collaborator, and partner. So with that, you know, we're thrilled to be here, really appreciate this opportunity. You know, we look forward to the opportunity to, to serve you. We think we're the right team to do, to do that. And with that, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Do any trustees have any questions?
I just wanted to note that I was looking at your QR code, and there's a lot of very valuable information in there with us moving forward with our long-range facility plan. You cover a lot of issues we should be looking into when we're designing new space, you know, as far as like being on the cutting edge of what we're looking to do for the students. You know, so I appreciate you putting that QR code in there.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have any questions for us?
Not directly, but we'd love to work with you guys, so how quick are we going to find out?
Tonight?
Tonight? Oh, nice.
Stick around.
Wonderful. Well, thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
We look forward to your update.
Thanks for coming out.
See you soon.
Thank you for coming back.
Okay, yes, thank you.
You too, guys.
Student representative? Just one second.
All right.
Let's just wait for them to walk them out.
All right. To start us off, I'd like to talk about what happened at the end of last month. There was the junior prom, so the class of twenty-twenty-six enjoyed their junior prom to end off, end off the month, the month of March. Thank you to Mr. Medina and Ms. McGee for making this unforgettable night possible. Over a hundred students enjoyed great music, dining, and the company of their peers and teachers. Senior Evan Papadopoulos has been officially recognized as C-Caucus's unsung hero, an award annually given by the New Jersey School Boards Association. Pritea is based upon students' impact on their school community through their acts of service and leadership. The Science Club has recently received three birdhouses purchased by the town. Students will paint these birdhouses and hang it around campus. We had a similar thing last year, and there were birdhouses like in the front, in front of the science room, and there were a few other ones around campus. So, yeah, we're doing that again. Our literary clubs hosted their fourth annual poetry competition this month. We had our first-place winner, who is Marell Magala, our second-place winner, Elias Ford, our third-place winner, Sia Chopra, and our honorable mention, Sanvi Metta. And in the beginning of this month, from April sixth to April twelfth, the National Honored Society hosted events during lunch for eligible seniors to register to vote. As they filled out these forms, students were reminded of their civic responsibility to actively participate in society. On April third, students in sale hosted the Senior Citizen Prom Spring, sorry, Spring Fling in the Pack. Over a hundred and twenty seniors and sixty students ate great food, danced, and even voted for prom king and queen. There are other superlatives as well, like cutest couple, best dressed, and other things of the sort. Also, students were invited by dream opportunity to attend the Supply Side Connect Trade Show at the Meadowlands Expo Center. At this event, students spoke with CEOs, scientists, entrepreneurs, and directors who exposed them to the world of business and gave insight on how to thrive in the modern workforce. Last month, last week, actually, our Foreign Language Honored Society hosted our annual cultural luncheon. Our FLHS advisor, Ms. DeGennaro, had her room packed with students, and more importantly, delicious food from various cultures around the world. Last Saturday, the sophomores held the annual Easter Bunny breakfast. It was incredibly successful. Students enjoyed breakfast, took pictures with the Easter bunny, and played games ran by students. Thank you to the advisors, Ms. Kuduski and Ms. Diarco, the parent volunteers, and the students who made it all possible. And finally, congratulations to Dr. Ufka Toddia, this year's valedictorian, and myself, this year's salutatorian. Thank you.
Very nice, Paul. Thank you. Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Acting Superintendent report?
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone has a good spring break. About six or seven weeks left in the school year. Pretty impressive how fast time goes by. I have to announce the suspensions from September to now. The total number is forty-two, and the highest we've had is ten in one month. So that's where we're at now. Let's hope we close out the year with zero. As far as where we're at, a couple of things that have been going on, you saw the presentation for the architects. We do have a few projects that we need to take care of here. We listed them. The budget process proceeded very efficiently. Started out a little rough, and I think we figured it out. And I, I think that was collaborative effort. And I'm very proud to say that, you know, all of the schools right now, when, when I see everybody, listen, the buses pull up, the kids go to school, I walk through the hallways, everybody's active, the classrooms are going, we have big tests coming up after the break. I wish all the kids well. Our APs will be starting soon. All the things that we do, we're, we're right in the home stretch of it. So let's finish it strong.
Thank you, Charlie. Business Administrator Board Secretary report?
Oh, hold on, we have to do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I always skip that one.
And they can make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, and bully findings as reported by the acting superintendent and are available at administrative offices for review. Check it.
Discussion? Call the role?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. DiDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Gella?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And now, Business Administrator Board Secretary report?
No report at this time.
What's that?
No report.
No report? Wow. No report, wow, all right. Public forum agenda items? Done? Moving right along. Governance Committee personnel?
Through the chair. Trustee Debary is not able to make it tonight, she asked me to speak and confirm about our meeting, so I have some minutes from that meeting. We discussed some full-time hires, including one for special education. Several positions are on the agenda for per diem substitute teachers. And also, we discussed any requests for leaves and one retirement, and we, we thanked the one employee who's retiring for their service. The policy manual has numerous updates that have been submitted for approval by Strauss Esme, which is the company that takes care of our policies. We pay them to keep them updated. Various policies are listed in the agenda book as being removed, which must, might be discerned to some people, because it looks like we're taking them out, but we were, it was explained to us by the interim superintendent and the business administrator that they've just been consolidated into other policies so that everything remains in there. You might say removed, but in actual, in actual reality, it was just updated so that it was put into a more appropriate place. Nothing has been taken out. One policy change is on the agenda that addresses safety on our school buses and the expanded use of cameras on them. Interim Superintendent Voorhees explained the reasons for these changes, which were all based on safety and security. Regarding policy number fifty-three oh six, health services to non-public schools, we were told that this is not an issue because we currently have no students that are receiving these services. That's the full report. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none? I'm going to make a recommendation to accept the acting superintendent approve and adopt resolutions R one oh one through R one point twelve, and motion M one oh one, as described below for the following.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
For policy, to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent approve and adopt resolutions R two point oh one through R two point oh two, as described for the following.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Education curriculum?
Good evening, all. The Education Committee had a monthly meeting on April eighth. I would like to share with you the updates we received. The twenty twenty-three school performance reports are out. The detailed report will be presented to the community during our board meeting in May. March and April have been packed with a lot of events. Both of our elementary schools had their science fair. Congratulations to all the winners and participants, and good luck to the students going to the Hudson County Science Fair. We are cheering for you. The high school musical SpongeBob was a must-see event of the year. Congratulations to the talented cast, crew, and to Mrs. Delacruz and her staff for creative, for creating another amazing and memorable show. Truly well done. And just a side note, I've been seeing a lot of this show for the past probably ten years, and every year is a big wow. So we are truly blessed to have our theater program. April is Autism Awareness Month. Our district's Autism Acceptance fundraiser raised over forty-three hundred dollars for Spectrum Works. Thank you for your generous donations to this great cause. Also, please mark your calendars. On May fourth, our district is participating in the Lincoln Tunnel Five K Challenge to raise funds and awareness for the Special Olympics programs in New Jersey. It's not too late to register and be a part of this amazing experience. Also, on May seventeenth, our district is participating in a Harman Kof Tower stair climb fundraiser for the Special Olympics programs. Please consider joining. It's, it's a very fun event and very memorable. Okay, we also have two resolutions to vote on tonight. I motion to accept the recommendations of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolution R three point zero one, approval of field trips, and resolution R three point zero two, approval of the public speaking curriculum.
Second. Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Operations Committee Finance?
At our meeting this month, we had discussion about buildings and grounds. School dude had three hundred and one completed tickets. The interviews have been completed for a new custodian at Huber Street School and Milford School. The new locks are on all the doors, for all the doors are now completed. The peramethium boards are installed, will be installed over the break. We're working with the town on a possible grant to upgrade and beautify the back of the school. We started preliminary planning on, on moving special needs students to Huber Street School. At Claritin School, Sal Electric will be working through the break, replacing outdated smoke detector heads. With the help of the DPW, we will be upgrading the courtyard over the break. Peramethium boards are being installed. At the middle school and high school, there is upgrading of the outside of the middle school entrance. Spectrum Communications will be coming out to move the radio antenna from its current location on the balcony of the pack to the roof of the pack. Both gas and water meters will be changed over the break. Chemicals upstairs in the labs need to be properly labeled and stored. We're gonna have a company come out to do that and dispose of any expired chemicals. All the external locks in the high school, middle school, and pack will be updated, hopefully being finished over the break. There was a two-way mirror installed at the high school main entrance. And then during finance, we got updated on budget and all the financials for the month. I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolutions R four point zero one through R four, uh, four point zero nine, as described below.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Safety, security, buildings, and grounds?
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolution R five point zero one, as described below.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ad-hoc committees, there are no, there were no meetings for any of the committees. At this time, I'd like to call on the committee chairs to schedule May meetings for all of the committees, except legislation, because I believe we have to adhere to certain guidelines with that one and negotiations. There are none at this time, but the other committees, if you could just schedule for May meetings. Thank you. Public forum, general? Nothing? Board member comments? Alex?
I just want to congratulate again, again, I mentioned about the middle school production of the sentence. The kids did an amazing job. It's such an incredible talent that we have in this district, and I'm so happy that we have an arts program now in the high school that's gonna keep them here as they continue to grow and, and more performances for our school. And secondly, I just want to congratulate CPAC on their Easter Bunny century event that they had on the thirtieth. It was a great event. Provided a calm and enjoyable setting for special needs children to be with the Easter Bunny. They had activities for the kids. They had treats for them. It was a really great event. The team that works there, led by Fabby, Fabiana Roman and Robert Roman, they do an amazing job. And the kids and the staff that are there helping out, again, just amazing job. Mr. Roman kept in character as the Easter Bunny the entire event, which is pretty impressive. So again, kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I'm, I'm gonna build off of that. I've heard really great things about that event, the CPAC event. I think it's great that they did that. I even suggested in the education meeting that maybe we can incorporate that next year into the breakfast with the Easter Bunny that the sophomore class hosts. So we talked about, you know, possibly doing that. Also, congratulations on the SpongeBob performance, Ms. Lamantina and company. She always does an amazing job, so congratulations to all involved in that. I wrote notes here, so bear with me. Congrats to the poetry winners, to Evan Papadopoulos, I hope I pronounced that correct. That is a, a great honor, a great job. The district is so proud of you. Congratulations to the sophomore class, and a big thanks to the class advisors, Ms. Diarco and Mrs. Kuduski. They did an amazing job. It was well-attended, even though it was a very rainy day, but it was well-attended and very successful. Congratulations also to the junior advisors for hosting an excellent prom that I heard that everyone had a great time at the junior prom as well. And last but not least, I'm so proud of you, Paul, for your honor. I look forward to attending that dinner with you, with the county, so that's, that's a great, great job. And your counterpart that also won, Drew? Okay. Kotada? Congratulations to Drew Kotada as well. I think that's everything. I'm just gonna say my accolades, and then I'm gonna go back to something. I just, on behalf of the board, want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday, and wish the students, the teachers, and staff an excellent spring break, and enjoy your week off. I just want to, before I turn it over to the rest of the trustees, want to discuss a letter that the Board of Education received from the CPAC Committee regarding some issues that they had and concerns that they had. I just want to not get too much into the letter, but I will say that our director of special education will be responding to that email and will address all of the concerns. But one of the concerns that, that is, affects the board that I want to discuss tonight was the suggestion to create a special education committee. So it is my position, and, and I've said this, you know, I don't know if I've said it publicly, but we've, we've talked in executive session about this as well. I believe that we, as a board, have a responsibility for equality in education, and we have an education committee which handles all of our students. So I don't believe it necessary, and we do discuss, we do have a, a special education portion of that meeting that we discuss. Tatiana is the chair of that committee, and we have been dedicating time to discuss all aspects of education. So I just, I just want to put that out there. So in the letter, it was suggested by the CPAC Committee that a special education committee be formed. So my suggestion, and I just wanted to publicly say this because I know we'll be closed for a week, and I will follow up by speaking directly to the head of the CPAC Committee. But my suggestion is for the board to appoint two liaisons to that committee to represent us. And that would then, I feel, be what's in the best interest of both the committee and the board, and the district, and the special education students. I will, my suggestion for the liaisons would be Ms. Geller, since she is the chair of the Education Committee, and Mr. Lyons. So I don't want to presume that that would be something that they would want to proceed with, so I am just putting it out there that I will be reaching out to the CPAC Committee to see how they feel about that. And further discussions will be made on that as well. Also, regarding the architect, should I let everybody say their comments and then get back to this? Do you want me to address this now? Okay, so as far as the architect, are we prepared to make a recommendation at this time in public? After we were able to see the presentations, is everybody ready to make, to do that? Everybody's ready to vote tonight?
I'll abstain. I want to go over everything that was given to us, but I'll gladly abstain.
You want to speak? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so you gotta think about the projects and the potential projects that we're gonna see soon. So as you all know up here, the move with roughly twenty-one students going from the Claritin side to the Huber side, they'll be in their home schools. We'll evaluate enrollment, which is a very important part of where we're going. And then we're gonna see what the needs are. Right now, the projects that we're looking at, there's some site issues. We have some things outside, bleachers, things like that, that are...
Can I, can I just jump in, Charlie? I think what's the most important thing at hand is that we have to move forward with a long-term facility plan, and we have a deadline for that, and we need an, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead. We, we need an architect to record on that.
So we need a, a long-term plan. So when you look at our other issues, engineering issues, we have all kinds of mechanical things that we need to start addressing. There are needs that we did go over with the committee. So I'm, I'm willing to listen to what anyone else has to say.
Does anyone want to speak?
Does the superintendent make the recommendation for an architect, or does that come from us?
Does the superintendent make that recommendation, is the question?
So the superintendent may make a recommendation, but it is not necessary for the board to appoint the architect. The board could make that appointment without the superintendent's recommendation. There are very few decisions that the board makes that doesn't require the superintendent's recommendation. Architects and attorneys are two of them. But he may make a recommendation.
I think everyone that wants to say something should say whatever they want to say.
I'm ready to make a recommendation.
You're not ready? Okay. Rico? Yeah, you said yes? No, I'm saying, are you prepared to vote tonight? Yeah. Tatiana?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Melissa?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You want to make a recommendation? Okay. Are you prepared to make a recommendation?
Yeah. Um, loo- looking at, looking at this over the last couple of months, I think our issues become more and more on the engineering part. If you think about this, the, the HVACs, our lighting, our outside site work, you know, fencing, metal type things. So a one-house deal is, in my opinion, land. My recommendation is land. I think they're a one-stop shop.
I make a motion to accept that recommendation.
Discussion? Call the roll?
So the recommendation, if it's approved, would be subject to a architect-of-record agreement. I would draft and then submit to the board for approval at the May meeting.
Bless you. Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Abstain.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Abstain.
Back to the board member comments. Want to speak?
If I could?
Yes.
Through the chair. I'm president, I'm glad we brought up the long-range facility plan, because I believe it's expiring next month, and I'm hopeful that we'll have everything done in time for that. The architects both discussed issues that we should be looking at when we're developing the long-range facility plan, so I'm glad they got to present to us tonight. Thank you for bringing up the letter from the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. It was an...
It was an extremely well-written, very detailed, very informative letter, and I appreciate you moving forward and allowing them the opportunity to invite us to be part, to partake in that, and if not, possibly discuss what else might be done. I was able to be a judge for the Youth Kindness Institute. It's a part of a service learning program within the Hygiene Project right here in Secaucus, which was started by a Secaucus High School student from the class of 2008, Mr. Kevin Williams. Approximately 25 students presented what they did for community service, including getting food to shelters and to people in the community, collecting things like cans of soup and socks, and doing presentations on, you know, what people go through around the planet who don't have enough water. It was extremely well done, and I'm hopeful that we can work in conjunction with that group to try to get more of our students familiar with what's going on there, because the students that presented, it was incredible. Some of the students, their third year, working on that. Very, very, very well done. And as we were told last week, and thank you, President DiDetta, for bringing us together for the board retreat. And I think it's important that we have meetings like that for us to discuss what we do so we can be proactive. And at that meeting, they discussed that we should be recognizing people from our community for things that are well done. And I, I think that this group, these 25 kids, all Secaucus students, would be able, if they came and we gave them, just had them come and hand out quickly, you know, certifications, tell them how much we, as a board, appreciate the fact they're doing this for our community. I will schedule the shared services meeting as per your request for sometime in May. And I want to wish President DiDetta and Ms. Howard, Trustee Howard, a very happy birthday. I know that our BA brought in a beautiful cake for them, but we got so caught up in our meeting that they didn't get to taste the cake, so I'm taking it home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. I just want to add one other thing I forgot to mention. My notes were on a different page. Congratulations and happy retirement to Sharon Holston. She's been with the district for many, many years, and we wish her well. And also, regretfully, we are losing Ryan Gray, who, in a very short time that he's been with the district, has made a huge impact on the kids. So he will be missed as well.
Kelly, may I add something?
Yes, yeah, sure.
Question. We have the Visions Committee. Do we have any of the CPAC parents in that committee?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have one comment. I also have been seeing all of our seniors and them committing to their colleges, so it's very exciting to see how many of our seniors are going to college, number one. And, and some of the colleges they're going to is, is very, very good. So congratulations to our seniors.
Thank you, Melissa. What else? Want to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.